It is about 8:36 in the morning, starting a little late this morning because of some traffic issues, I'm sure. So, welcome all. This is the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, and we will start this morning with an invocation from Commissioner Antor. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Driving around these days, I see a lot of signs that say, "Pray for our country." And I'm wondering, why are people putting these signs up all over? I think everybody sees the same thing, regardless of party. These are different times right now, and we're trying to negotiate what to do. And we're using our own knowledge, and I think it's really important to go back to, I think most of us are Christians here. Regardless, we have a book that was published for us as a guide, and I think it's important, and I'm going to be a little less praying than I am preaching here, just for a moment, if you indulge me. I woke up this morning with news of another shooting here in Grand Rapids, which has become commonplace, as we all know, we're reading the same. This happens all around our country. Chicago, for instance, every weekend, they've got a great loss. And I keep thinking, why is this happening now at this point in time? And I think it's because, over time, we have devalued life in this country, and this is just the fruit of that. When you devalue life, people get treated really poorly in all phases of life. And we have certain unalienable rights that we are guaranteed. And one of them, of course, is life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And I'd like just to ask everybody, how are we doing in that realm? Jesus said to us, "For whatever you do to the least of our brothers, that you do unto me." Think about that. How are we doing in that regard? Matthew 18 mentions that whoever causes a child to sin, it would be better for that person to have a great millstone around his neck and throw it into the sea. That's for simply causing a child to sin. Matthew 7, people were saying, "Lord, Lord, haven't we prophesied in your name, cast out demons in your name, and done many great acts of righteousness in your name?" Lord said to them, "Depart from me. I never knew you," those who practice lawlessness. I just want to remind everybody that life is top of every chain. That's what we should be focused on. If without that, all this other stuff really doesn't matter. You know, we have a Ready by Five Millage, which is great, takes care of kids. We have a Senior Millage, which is great. But what about life? What about life? How can we help senior citizens that are in nursing homes? How can we really help kids that never have a chance at life, whether they're taken before they're born or after? Life, if we can't get that right, what can we get right? I just want to remind that, I think, at the forefront of everything, this life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, that's the best we can do as a government, to guarantee those things. My little, simple prayer, I just wanted to pray for our Lord and Savior to look down at us, have mercy on us, and forgive us for our sins.
Let's allege allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. I went to Calvin, so I should know better, since we always had to take roll and attendance before we did the prayer. I failed to do that this morning, so I will ask our clerk to go ahead and take the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just thought you were buying some time. Commissioners Green.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Bolter.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Here.
Commissioners Teal.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
LeGrand.
Here.
Wilkowski.
Present.
Womack.
Here.
Woodin.
Here.
Skaggs. Chair Stuck.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 15 members present, four absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will move to item number five, Special Order of Business, starting with employee recognition. And I'll ask Darius Quinn, if he's in the House, to please step forward. Good morning.
Good morning. So, this is actually Al's show, but I'd like to ask that Danielle,
Well, good morning, Danielle, and congratulations. We're here today to recognize Danielle Hart Beckley from the Kent County Clerk Register of Deeds Office. Actually, it's the County Clerk's court-side office, who is selected as one of our quality service employees for the second quarter. The individual who nominated Danielle for providing high-quality service to our external customers wrote, "During the course of one week, I had to contact the Kent County Circuit Court Clerk's Office several times, and each time I happened to speak with Danielle. Danielle went above and beyond to assist me each time and provided solutions to my issues. I truly could not have completed my job without Danielle doing such an amazing job. Thank you, Danielle, on behalf of myself and the law firm I represent." Please join us in congratulating Danielle for her notable contributions to the residents of Kent County.
We really appreciate it. We have something for you, too.
Yeah. Good morning. My name is Amy Doring. I'm the chief deputy court clerk across the street. Danielle is one of my employees, and this recognition couldn't go to anyone better, in my opinion. She is one of our best employees. She's always has always has a positive attitude. This is before her work shift even starts, and here she is, ready to receive this award. So, thank you to everyone who has given this to her today. She is very
So, as long as we're talking about our best and brightest, I'll ask Commissioner Ponstein to join me at the podium. Wait, wait. All right. Well, good morning. Most of you know that our colleague and friend, Commissioner Ponstein, was recently installed as the president of the Board of Michigan Association of Counties. And those of us that have known him for a while are not surprised. We know him to be dedicated, committed, an advocate for his constituents, and always interested in the issues that address this state and counties in particular. So, I am not surprised, and I'm honored, to be his friend, to be able to stand here and present a proclamation in recognition of that swearing-in. Whereas Stan Ponstein was elected in 2008 by members of Kent County District 7 to serve as a county commissioner, and whereas, after years of dedication, serving on committees, attending meetings, and acting as MAC's first vice president, Commissioner Ponstein is very deserving of this position. And whereas the installation of Kent County Commissioner Ponstein as the Michigan Association of Counties' 114th Board President is one of the highlights of the 2022 Michigan Counties Annual Conference, and whereas Commissioner Ponstein was recognized and gave his inaugural address at the president's banquet on September 20, 2022, at MAC's 2022 Annual Conference, and whereas Commissioner Ponstein has been a model for constituent outreach service and will further support the residents of Kent County in this new role, now therefore be it resolved that I, Board Chair Stan Stuck, on behalf of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, hereby recognize the achievements and service of Commissioner Stan Ponstein and congratulate him on his new presidential role at the Michigan I did say I could say a few words. You got that buzzer there going?
Well, that was the mistake. I think on Tuesday night, when they said I had 15 and I went 30. You know, I don't really thrive on stuff like this. I just try to get the job done. We've got a lot of challenges in the state of Michigan coming up over the next couple of years. So, I'm going to keep fighting, not just for Kent County, but for all 83 counties, not just here in Kent County in Michigan, but throughout the country, because with this appointment, I get an automatic appointment to the National Association's Board of Directors. So, my life will be a little bit busier, but the advocating for this county will never end. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll move to our next item, which is Special Order of Business, MSU Extension. Erin Moore is here somewhere. Good morning, Erin. You brought some friends with you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Erin Moore. I'm the district director for MSU Extension. And I like to start out being a little interactive with our group today, and I invite you all to join me. I'm going to ask you all to give me a virtual fist bump, just like, yes. So, we are MSU Extension, but we are connected to MSU, and keep them out there. Yeah. And now I'm going to have you reach out your fingers. We extend out into every county in the state of Michigan. That's 83 different counties. Now, I want you to take that hand and raise it up high if you think that learning is this lifelong journey. We learn at every stage of our lives, from when we are children until the day we are sitting in a board seat in front of us. And now, give yourself a self-five. Yeah. In the age of COVID, we're just giving self-fives. So, today I have the pleasure to introduce one of our experts, Kendra Wills, who's an extension educator and product center counselor. And she's going to be talking about the work that we're doing with the MSU Product Center. So, Kendra, come on in.
Commissioners, thanks for having us this morning. As you can see from the front of the slide, my name is Kendra Wills. I work here in Kent County. I actually work all across West Michigan. And here are a few numbers from the Product Center, which is a statewide division of Michigan State University Extension. Here's some photos of our products that we've been able to highlight this past year, and we'll get into what those were. Just to give you an overview of the Product Center's goal, we work with entrepreneurs in the food, agricultural, and natural resources sector of the economy to bring products to market. Most of the time, we're working with entrepreneurs interested in consumer packaged goods, something you'd find on a shelf at a grocery store most of the time. And here's one of our clients at the opening of Bridge Street Market with this product there. I am a member of one of 10 counselors that work with business owners all across the state with the Product Center. I also have a team of specialists. So, not only is it just me working in Kent County, it's all of these team members. We have our director. We have a food processing and innovation center with Jason Hoffman directing that, where actual food can be co-packaged and tested and processed. We have a meat specialist with Tina Conklin. We have a food safety specialist, third-party audit specialist with Sheena Fate, myself. We have numerous faculty members and students working with businesses on products, like the School of Packaging, marketing classes, Food Science Department doing product testing and sensory evaluation. So, our entrepreneurs really get a lot of benefits that the university and the students offer through the Product Center and through your support. Some of our specialty areas at the Product Center, of course, consumer packaged goods need nutrition facts. When you find them on the grocery store shelves, you often find a nutrition facts label. We help entrepreneurs make those labels for them. We use a database system, and our students actually do that work with us. We also do shelf stability testing, which comes into play with the barbecue sauce samples on your table. So, when something's in a sealed container sold at room temperature, it needs to be shelf stability tested to make sure botulism isn't going to be a concern. We have food safety scientists doing this for all different kinds of products. And the beauty of this, startups can access these services, as well as multimillion-dollar facilities. So, we work with all levels at affordable rates that even startups can afford. Just a little bit about our clients that we've served from Kent County in 2020 to 2022, the university's fiscal years, July to June. We've served 108 clients specifically from Kent County in that time. They have over 1,000 employees working with them. We've provided 500 hours of direct assistance. 51 jobs were created during that time. 60 jobs retained. 18 new business licenses were secured. 19 new products were launched. Almost $10 million in sales growth in the last year, and COVID was a real factor in that. So, it could have been even higher, but I think that's a pretty impressive number. And over $20 million was invested through loans or owner capital or grants. You can see the breakdown of gender in our clients as well. We do work with a lot of startup entrepreneurs. We also have a racial and ethnic breakdown of our clients, and we serve across sector of Kent County. We really try and reach everyone. We try and make sure that language is not a barrier as well. Excuse me. With that, during COVID, I was receiving a lot of requests related to food truck businesses or mobile food businesses. These businesses are more affordable. They can be incubation spaces for new entrepreneurs. And we decided to launch a free online program on how to start a food truck business through MSU Extension. It's available to everyone. We realized quickly that there was a demand for this program in Spanish. So, we offered a pilot test of the Spanish program. This past June, we partnered with Carlos Sanchez of Ferris State University, who does entrepreneurship training program. He was our lead instructor with our materials. We received funding support from the Weggie Foundation. We had 26 participants. It was a four-week class, and we had presenters from GROW, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Food Truck Association, the Health Department, the Grand Rapids Fire Department. And we had two food truck owners participating in that program that were Spanish speakers as well. We also have been working with Whole Foods. They launched a store in Grand Rapids this year, opened in August. 18 new Kent County businesses were able to get their products onboarded in Whole Foods. We do have third-party audit work in place, and we're having food safety training programs with them as well. We have a lot of partnerships throughout the state. Some of our partners are listed on this slide. Last night, Start Garden had their demo days, where they issued $10,000, $20,000 checks. We have three food entrepreneurs that were winners of the $20,000 awards last night at Start Garden. We also have great partnerships with Meyer and Spartan Nash and many other retailers, as well as the Department of Agriculture and MEDC. I just wanted to quickly highlight on your table, you have some samples from a client of mine, Debbie Mitchell, who got up early this morning, and she works long days in the food industry. I'm so proud of Debbie. We worked with her on her product licensing from the very beginning, her business planning, getting into an incubator space. She launched a food truck, food trailer business. She's at Fulton Street Market with that. She sells her barbecue sauce at Bridge Street Market and So We Me Market. She does catering. You have a catering menu and her business card. I'm just so proud of her, and she's an excellent cook. If you'd like to come up and talk with her afterward about something, she'd be glad to talk with you. Debbie, thanks so much for being here. Debbie, any questions?
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments? I see Commissioner, oh, we have more.
No, just questions.
Oh, all right. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Kendra. It's been a long time. Good to see you again. You mentioned the nutritional facts label. Do you guys actually produce those?
Yes, we do.
You drill the information out of this?
Our students do. I don't personally, but yes, we do. We use a database system called Genesis, based on the recipe and the ingredients of the product itself.
So, you go in and get the nutritional value out of that, MSU Extension. I had no idea that you guys could do that.
I know. I know. We have so many services with an extension. It's hard for us to do marketing of all these things.
This seems like a real critical piece. And what's the cost for doing that?
It's about $300 a label. If it's really complicated, it can run more, but that's about the average cost.
It's a one-time cost unless the ingredients change?
That's right.
Okay. Hey, thank you very much for your work.
You bet.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, I've had a lot of good meetings here at Kent County Commission, but a meeting with delicious barbecue sauce has much improved. So, thanks, Debbie. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, just want to thank you for all the services you're applying to helping these entrepreneurs with in this field of work, and just thank Momma Dee's Kitchen for the finest wine barbecue. Congratulations, and continue good luck in your business.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein.
Kendra, always good to see you. It's been a while. So, I just want to thank Michigan Extension, I mean, Michigan State Extension, for all the things they did. I know, last time Erin was here, I told her that maybe we were trying to cover too much. And this points out one sector that I don't think a lot of people know, that the extension is responsible for this. And products like the one in front of me, you know, a lot of times, these are recipes that families or someone had that they're passing on, and all they knew, you know, need is that little jump over the hurdle to get it going. And it looks like you're doing a fantastic job at everything you're doing. So, appreciate everything for what MSU does for just the local units and everything else that you do. It's a large operation that affects our food chain supply here and across the state of Michigan. So, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Hennessy.
I looked at the address here. It's on Ariana Northwest, and so I want to give a shout-out that she's a business that originates on the west side of Grand Rapids. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Your district or mine? We don't know yet.
I believe it's mine.
All right.
I'm in the 1,500 block on the west side. This is 13.
Stan, we know that anything in the west side is Carol's. You just don't even try to joke.
Not much room for me anymore. All right. Well, thank you all. Nothing else from Commissioners? Appreciate it. Thank you for being here, Erin, and all for that. Thank you for the premium. Even those of us that think mustard is a spice, this will be great.
Thanks. I hope you enjoy it.
All right. The next item on our agenda is public comment. This is the public comment opportunity to address the board with respect to matters that are on our agenda. There will be another opportunity later in the agenda to address general matters. So, if you wish to address the board with respect to matters that are on the agenda, you may do so now. Please identify yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'm Scott Smith. I'm the city attorney for Wyoming, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have on the agenda item about the property transfer. Other than that, I won't say anything.
Well done for a lawyer. Very good. We can cut your mic at any time. All right. Good morning. We're sorry.
No problem. Good morning. Always good to have some humor. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Daniel Scott. And first of all, I wanted to give my full approval to Commissioner Antor and what he shared about life. And I just want to address how we could spend some of our funds. I've been here before. It's been a few years, and I continue to speak up for the unborn fellow Kent County residents, particularly the ones being murdered at 3:20 East Fulton. On an average of 120 every month, our fellow Kent County residents are being murdered. And I would love to appeal, I understand that we have a lot of money to spend. I would make a suggestion to shut that place down, I'll speak more about that later, and take the funds, some funds, and turn that into a home where women and their, the fathers of their children, husbands or boyfriends, would be able to receive assistance to help keep their children, rather than have them murdered, and support them however long they might need to be supported. Commissioner Antor spoke about what Scripture says about life. I can assure you, if we spend more money to help these precious unborn children, the almighty Lord God will bless Kent County. And Scripture says that the Lord hates hands that shed innocent blood. And how can the Lord bless Grand Rapids, Kent County, if we continue to allow these murders to continue? Also, I'd like to appeal that you can all, I appeal to you, we're praying that you might support our local DA, Chris Becker. Praise the Lord that he's one of the three county DAs out of 83 that would love to implement the 1931 law that murder children, killing children in the womb is murder. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. For those of you wondering, that was barely on the agenda items. We let Mr. Scott go ahead, but I again remind the public that this is for agenda items only. Anyone else? If not, we'll move to the next item of business, which is our consent agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move to adopt the consent agenda.
It is moved and supported by Commissioner Coleman. Any questions, comments? If not, this is a roll call. So, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Wilkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 15 yeses and 0 nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item number eight, which are our resolutions for the day. On 8A, I will go back to Commissioner Antor again.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution Number 99.
Removed is our support, supported by Commissioner Ponstein. Any questions or comments? I see none. This is a roll call vote. So, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 99, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
No.
Coleman.
No.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Wilkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 13 yeses, 2 nays. The motion passes. Resolution Niner Niner is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item 8B, and I will call on Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I would like to move Resolution Number 100, which is setting the criteria, the selection criteria for the Purchase of Development Rights Program for 2023.
And is supported by Commissioner McLeod. Any questions or comments on this one? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Stuck. So, I, you know, I don't want to argue on what the role of this county is when it is when it comes to protecting the development rights of our farmland. All I know is that nationwide, farms are in trouble either from drought, severe weather. And now we're hearing on the news where over 20% of our farmland is now owned by foreign entities. What this country and this state and this county needs is a safe, secure food supply. And one of the drivers of that is the farmland itself. How we protect it, we can argue about that. But I hope we all can agree that farmland needs to be protected because food is gonna be one of these issues that's gonna hit us in the face in the next decade. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just add my support to what Commissioner Ponstein just said, that we can argue separately on the, the right mechanisms to support, you know, agriculture in our community. And I, I just wanna give a shout out to the, the Agricultural Preservation Board, Matt Channing and his work with that board. I think in, in recent years, they've, they've done a lot of good work kind of extending into, you know, other mechanisms of engagement with the agricultural community, et cetera, to do that very thing. So I just wanna express my appreciation for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Stan, for those words and Matt for your understanding of this. It's been controversial talking about PDR. And I understand why it's controversial. But the net effect of PDR is fantastic. If you look at the, they do survey, I think it was Epic MRA did a survey on the top areas in the country to land as far as quality of life concerns. And each one of the top 10 had a viable PDR program or equivalent thereof, where they were protecting farmland. The beautiful thing about protecting farmland, it creates an atmosphere. People wanna come live in these areas. I know it seems counterintuitive, but the fact is, real estate values are skyrocketing in these areas. They're creating urban growth areas, which is great for the realtors and the home builders. They're actually building. You know, it's, it's a pro-growth program. But what you're doing is you're growing in a smart way. You're following the infrastructure. You're not dotting the landscape with houses all over prime ag land, but creating the atmosphere where you know that prime farmlands could be protected in perpetuity, hopefully. Because we have to understand, this is an asset we have in this country is this prime farmland. It will go away eventually. We're not gonna be able to grow crops and greenhouses and factories and things like that, even though people say we can't. We can't. The truth of the matter is, we have to take care of this property. And I understand the arguments both ways. Having gone out to Lancaster three different times and looking at their program, comparing and contrasting what they're doing with what we're doing. As a very conservative person, I fully support PDR. I wish we could come up with a, maybe a better way of implementing it. And I understand that, but I just wanted to say I appreciate taking a look at this. And we've always gotta consider, what's our end goal here? What do we want Kent County to look like 50 years and 100 years from now? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments? If not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 100, Commissioners Green?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan? Jones? Bolter? Ponstein?
Yes.
Burl?
No.
Coleman?
No.
Vice Chair Breevy?
Yes.
Commissioners Teal?
Yes.
Sparks? McLeod?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
LaGrand?
Yes.
Bulkowski?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs? Chair Stuck?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 13 yays, two nays. The motion passes. Resolution 100 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 8C, and I will again call on Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move resolution 101.
It was, is there support? Supported by, thank you for that, Commissioner Wooden. Any other comments or questions? I see none. This also is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 101, Commissioners Green?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan? Jones? Bolter?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Burl?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy?
Yes.
Commissioners Teal?
Yes.
Sparks? McLeod?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
LaGrand?
Yes.
Bulkowski?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs? Chair Stuck?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 15 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 101 is adopted.
Thank you. For our next resolution, I will call on Commissioner Bulkowski.
Thank you, Chair. I move resolution 102 of today's date, which is the transfer of property to the city of Wyoming.
Support. Supported by Commissioner Burl. Comments, questions? Got a lawyer here you can question on, so this is your great opportunity. I don't know. I think he's here as a public service. Yes, all right. Commissioner LaGrand.
I, I just feel that I have to comment on the transfer of median strips somehow. But I am curious how this came to light, that we own.
How did we end up with the medians?
Well.
Yeah.
Why has it taken us this long to get rid? I don't know. I mean, I'm just curious about all that.
Yeah, sure. I, I mean, we've been, we've been part of an agreement with Wyoming and others to help pay for maintenance of the median strip pretty much since the airport moved. And so I, I think the energy around this to, to get this straight started maybe right before COVID. And it, it was put aside for a little while. And so we're just trying to finish it now.
Oh, it sounds like a great idea. It's just almost absurd, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Any other que, yes, Commissioner Womack?
Yes, we were contributing 5,000 per year for the maintenance of that median strip. And I saw during the transfer, there's gonna be 10,000 given to the city of Wyoming. I'm sure that was a one-time 10,000, but.
Correct.
Just double checking.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, this does not say roll call, but I'm pretty sure this is required to be a roll call vote. So let's go ahead and do a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 102, Commissioners Green?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan? Jones? Bolter?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Burl?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy?
Yes.
Commissioners Teal?
Yes.
Sparks? McLeod?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
LaGrand?
Yes.
Bulkowski?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs? Chair Stuck?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 15 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 102 is adopted.
Thank you. Our next item of business is our second opportunity for public comment. If there was anyone here that wishes to address the board with respect to matters within our general jurisdiction, you may do so now. You have up to three minutes. If you'll identify yourself, even though we know you, but if you'll identify yourself, please.
How you doing, everybody? My name is Deandre Jones. I stay in Grand Rapids, Michigan, on the west side of Grand Rapids. First of all, I'd like to say, Commissioner Ponstein, congratulations on your presidential inauguration. I, I really do, I really do mean that because every time I come here, you always tell me that you appreciate me speaking. So congratulations on that. I really genuinely mean that. And I really appreciate every time you come speak to me. That means a lot to me. Second of all, I seen that my proposal for the, for the esports tournament wasn't eligible through the ARPA, which I'm, I was disappointed. I'm not gonna lie to you, but you know what I'm saying? I've been coming to these city, I mean, these Kent County Commission meetings early, and I usually have to get up early. And I'd be tired, just like y'all, you know what I'm saying? These are tiring, you know what I'm saying? I know I'm young, but you know what I'm saying? Sometimes I don't get enough sleep. And so just being an advocate for my community, wanna see things, good things have come from these county commission meetings, from like me being able to present esports to the library, which went well. And so they're gonna actually look into that. So I'm optimistic and know that great things are coming also from the school district. I'm gonna be able to talk to the athletic directors in the school district about esports and implementing that. So a lot of good things are coming, and some powerful things are coming. So I'm excited for those things. I also wanna talk about, just continuously saying that I hope that you guys consider the projects that other people have for the ARPA funding. In my project, I didn't get any feedback from my proposal to try to buy a property and try to develop a community center here on the, in the Black Hills, which is a predominantly African-American and Hispanic neighborhood. And so I wanna be able to attack the equity gap that we have here, police and community relations, the environmental problems like, you know, sustainability, air pollution, educating people on solar panels, geothermal energy, different things like that, and being able to develop an urban community center and being able to do some cool things. So maybe it doesn't get support, maybe it's not. But I'm not gonna stop ambitiously pursuing that goal until it's a reality for me, because I really want my goals. I really have a passion for my community. I'm also got my nominee for the Community Spirit Awards to link up. So all of my hard work has been paying off from the social justice work, to the Urban Youth Summer Basketball League, to just giving back to my community. I really truly believe I was the community spirit of my community. From the participatory budgeting process, I'm one of the facilitators, and I'm gonna be leading the whole entire voting process to make sure that people vote on the best projects for the PB money, for the $2 million that our city government has, to be able to, you know, let government, use government money to decide what's the best projects and what they feel is. Because I've heard so many complaints from people that are, are elder population, are senior citizens, to younger, to my generation, to the younger generation, and what they feel the government should prioritize. And so that's why I was able to take the lead on that and just hearing the community concerns and just things that matter to my community. It matters to me. And I'm just gonna continuously passionately give them back to my community. And like I said, Commissioner Ponstein, congratulations, man.
Thank you. I, I knew I could count on you to test our new bell system. Thank you. All right. Good morning.
Hello, Commission. My name is Brandon Bilskey, and I live in the land of the three fires, the Odawa, Ojibwe, and the Potawatomi, where we all reside. And I think we should have that acknowledgement every time we have a meeting. It would be good. So maybe someone should put that down. And in a space of great power like we have here, I think I, I also want to congratulate Ponstein on, on your really big move up in that regard. Like you'll have so many voices and, and ears that what we say and do when we come together is vital. And I'm here to promote vitally democracy, which is threatened. You know, we see 20% of our, our food source being outsourced to foreign countries. Well, the conglomerates, the corporatization and monopolization is bad. No matter what party you're a part of, we're all threatened. And the inability to control our food sources, our housing, because of national systems of power and control means we need to be united, united ideologically beyond the confines of, of this right or left mentality. And fascism is truly at our door. So what are you all going to do to stand up to that at, at every county level? And beyond that, we need to do more. And I appreciate your words, Antor. But it gives me hope to see people talk about spirit, like the idea of namaste, that God is in each of us. And so when I say the word equity and, and what we need to do to fight for everyone, ideologically, that these things cannot be partisan right now, that we need, as Kent County, to be leaders in, in Michigan and beyond, because there is power here. And when we work together to invest in things like these entrepreneurial spaces where we give people the means and localize our food production, because it's going to get bad. I was discussing and debating water wars in 2006, okay? And the heat waves are coming. Cities, coastal cities will be underwater. And so we need to not just have a good system, like three days, and, and our grocery stores are out of food. We need to not only localize food production, we need to deeply invest in this sort of work, okay? So with this, millions of dollars, equitable food, localizing food production, and using that and, and getting the will of the community, this is not accessible, the, the time that you have this meeting, okay? The frequency, who actually, how many comments do you get based on your population? Let people call in, have more meetings. This should be your basic civic duty. You are the advocates and the entrepreneurial trainers of the future. And in that, you need to do more to let your community have a voice, because the will of the people is not here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Daniel Scutt. Good morning. Again, I would at least ask that you keep your comments to new matters, not matters that you've already addressed. Otherwise, we would not be fair to the rest of them, because we only give the public three minutes. So, thank you.
I'll be sharing new information. This is what you all swore to, I understand, from the internet. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of County Commissioner. This is part of the U.S. Constitution. We, the people of the United States, in order to perform a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general wherefore, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves, to our posterity, do ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America. Ensure domestic tranquility, it says. I would encourage you to ask, if you could, any of these babies being murdered, if they are enjoying domestic tranquility or even their parents. Provide for the common defense and promote the general ware, general welfare. Again, don't ask any of these children being murdered or poisoned or burned or crushed if they are enjoying general welfare. Here's the preamble to the Constitution of the state of Michigan. We, the people of the state of Michigan, grateful to almighty God for the blessings of freedom and earnestly desiring to secure these blessings undiminished to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this constitution. Webster's dictionary defines posterity as descendants and succeeding generations. May I remind each one of you, you swore to this, and I appeal to you, are you fulfilling your oaths? Now, this is not gossip. This is, in fact, information gathered by WZZM13 about the man who does these murders at 320 East Fulton, Mr. Gordon. In 1992, he was arrested for aggravated assault, suspended jail sentence. 2012, domestic violence, sentenced to four days in jail. 2015, disorderly person, suspended jail person, uh, sentence. 215, 2015, operating while intoxicated. Can you imagine killing a baby while intoxicated? 2010, Gordon's wife Shelley filed a personal protection order against him. She wrote, quote, "Thomas has beat me several times in the past three years. He's even put his 45-millimeter pistol to my head while I was sleeping." Do we want someone like this performing these at 320 East Fulton? Please, speak up for the unborn, save the unborn.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Shayna Hanes-Herd. I live in the west side of Grand Rapids. Just a few words for you. Those who have the power to define have the power to determine. How do you define quality of life? Those who have the power to define have the power to determine. And I find it really interesting that the Grand Rapids City has done such a great job getting the word out about the $2 million available at the city. But yet, when I ask people who are informed about the city budget, whether they're aware of the $127 million available at the county, most people do not have a clue. So I just want to inquire about why that might be. This process needs to be transparent, not invisible. And I wanna know, who are the consultants that we've given the power to define and determine? What do they understand about the needs of Grand Rapids and Kent County outside of a survey where the income, median income was evidently $99,000 a year? What types of community engagement, bias training, et cetera, happened before the proposals were selected and graded for the catalog? And why were 16 proposals missing from the catalog? Whose proposals were tossed aside and why? Do you want residents to trust this process? Do you want voters to pay attention to how 127 million? Do you want voters to pay attention to how $127 million is about to be spent? Because frankly, there is a lack of trust. But let's not forget that there is not a lack of unity from Black organizers and leaders in this community. We are paying attention despite the narratives. We are a united front. And so we expect this process to be transparent, accessible, and ultimately equitable. We know our history. We know all too well the disparities that our community continues to face. So we will continue to be paying attention and hopefully asking some tough questions and getting some answers because those who have the power to define, which you all have, have the power to determine. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Hello, good morning. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you. My name is Siné Gant Jordan. I am a third generation, hello, Commissioner. I'm a third generation here in the city of Grand Rapids of disproportionately resourced families in a community that was underserved, okay? I am asking that the review of this ARPA fund is considered and looked at through a lens of equity. This funding of 127 million should go to those communities that have been left behind. And just as my colleague spoke to and everything that she said, I uplift. And we are formalizing, as a Black and Brown community, to work together in a unified way and hope that we can make a difference with this opportunity. I've lost many of my family members due to the disparities, including homes and businesses because of the decisions that were made by those that have the power to determine how we live in this community, what we're worthy of in this community and what we're not. And what I'm seeing is that the same people get funded over and over again. I want to ask you why we need all this low-income housing. I believe we deserve the same type of housing, all of us across the board. Houses that are built well, energy efficient, and that we can thrive in, our children can play in the backyard, we have a backyard, we can grow a garden. Those type of things are things that we're looking for. We're looking to improve our workforce as a Black and Brown community. We've been turned down by opportunities because people that have the power to determine are the ones that have been making decision of who comes behind them. And it's usually a family member or a close friend in positions of power. And that has impacted how we live. So we're asking you to do the right thing with this funding. We're asking why the 16 proposals were left out, and we do expect an explanation publicly. And then we want to make sure they are reviewed and included in the process. I'm not familiar with many of you, some of you I am, and I'm grateful for each of you that are here and the work that you do. And we want to be able to elevate you in our spaces, but we can't when we don't know what the hell you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? If not, we will then move to the next item on the agenda, which is our Administrator's Report. Al?
I have a few items for you today. Let me add the voices of the Administration to the chorus of congratulations to Commissioner Ponstein on ascending to the presidency of MAC. We know he'll do a great job during that time. And Kent County will be represented. Last night, the Kent County Parks Foundation had its Something's Grilling Annual Fundraiser Event, and Bill Curry of United Forest Products was highlighted as the recipient of their annual award. Also, Commissioner Bolter was also given a lot of kudos for her support of the parks and her time also as Chair, and that was also well-deserved. We have been spending a lot of time with ARPA, so let me just hit right up front that, yes, 16 proposals were not included in the original amount. And really, that had to do with staff deciding to extend the timeline from 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 p.m. So had we adhered to the timeline that we advertised for months, those 16 proposals would not have been considered at all. But the Qualtrics program, the computer program, took those 16 proposals that came in after 5:00 p.m. and before 12:00 p.m. and put them into a separate bucket, and we did not realize that. And once we did, we immediately contacted the folks who submitted those and brought those in for consideration. I'll also just say, anybody who wants to know about the Kent County process should go to kentcountyarpa.com. We've had a very public process. We received kudos from all over the place on this process. We had public meetings in many different areas of the county, including at Link Up, where Stan and I did present in the 4957 community. And we've done surveying, we've done everything we can. And I will agree, kudos to the city for the great job they've done in advertising the availability of the 2 million, of the 90 million that they're receiving in ARPA funds. And the county has been very transparent and has accepted applications for the entire 127. Obviously, some of those funds will be used for county initiatives, but there will also be community initiatives, I believe, that the Board will be funding as well. So again, I just encourage people, get the facts, go to kentcountyarpa.com. The entire process is laid out from the beginning to where we're at today. The whole public was given the 780-page book of every single proposal with every presenter, all the dollar amounts. You can see all that. It's all online. I challenge anyone to look nationally and find a more transparent, more public process than what the Kent County Board has done with this amount of ARPA funding. Okay, moving on, budget. We are ready to present the budget. So you have an upcoming meeting where I'll be presenting that. We do have a balanced budget. And this year, we are adopting a nine-month budget because we're moving to an October 1 fiscal year for all county funds starting on October 1 of 2023. And so this will be a nine-month budget from January 1 through September 30. And that will get us on that new track where we're actually doing one set of books instead of a set of books for two different fiscal years. Just wanted to congratulate the Right Place. They're doing a tech week. There's a number of different events that are going on this week. If you drill into the Right Place website, you can see what some of those are. Kent County is hosting a Trail Summit in this room next week. So basically nonprofits, foundations, local governments, county, everyone who's got a stake, I think, in the Greenway and in a number of the other trail projects throughout West Michigan will be gathering. We've been working on developing a map that will show everything from the Kent County line to Lowell, the cost, what the projects are, and hopefully that's a guide that we can use to gain more state and federal funding, more nonprofit funding, make county investments wisely. But it'll be, I think, the first omnibus picture of what that system will look like that we'll have available. I represent you on the DGRI Board. And as you know, last year, shortly after my arrival as Administrator, the group created the Grand River Inc. Board to kind of help guide investments on the river corridor through Grand Rapids. And of course, DGRI was successful in obtaining a $55 million grant. And so just yesterday, the DGRI Board approved an agreement with GRI to help manage those fundings and projects going forward. We also set up a technical committee. Deputy Administrator Mark Ramble will represent the county on that technical committee as they review some of the investments that will need to be made with some of those funds. Also wanted to thank Al Jano, Linda Rensland, our project manager in facilities. They did a great job with this room. And of course, another initiative that will be happening as we close out the year will be going to paperless. So we'll be done with all these paper agendas, and I think we'll be a lot more efficient with that. Let me see if I missed anything. No, I think that's good for today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Al. We'll move to the next item, excuse me, which is reports. Any reports from Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Food has been a focus today on some of our topics and resolutions. And so I'll mention that Jackie O'Connor is retiring after 38 years with the Area Agency of Aging and that she started there as a dietitian 38 years ago. And she began the food and the nutrition programs here in Kent County and in the region. So her reception will be Monday afternoon at the Area Agency offices, and we wish her the best. She spent six years as the Executive Director, and she is only the fourth director, fourth director. I'm thinking, maybe it's a third director since 1974. Larry Murray, Tom Zawinski, Jackie O'Connor.
There you go.
So it's a very amazing continuity and a very amazing growth and development of the programs there. And then saying that, Senior Milage will begin its review of its 30-plus programs the second week in October. And so that will be going on as well. And then I have to mention, congratulations to Stan Ponstein, Commissioner Ponstein. And he actually was the highlight of the program the other day. Over the last two years, he has spent much time going to all 83 of Michigan's counties. And he presented a slideshow, not of all 83, but of some of the highlights. And it really was fascinating to see these views, these little snapshots of the 83 counties. And it was a wonderful program, and I congratulate you on your new honors. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. Yesterday, I was at the Grand Valley Metro Council Transportation Policy Committee meeting, and I'm going to pass these around here. The Metro Council is working on their 2050 transportation plan. So transportation wheels move very slowly. But now is the time to take a survey. It's a very easy survey. You can talk about anything such as bike lanes, safe intersections, quality of pavement, congestion. They really want a wide, a really wide variety of feedback from every community. So I urge you to share it however is easiest for you in your own communities because they need all kinds of manner of feedback. There is a bonus that the communities with the highest rates of participation can win a beautification grant. So that's a little bonus. But they really want the information, and it's an easy survey, so share as much as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? If not, we'll move to the next item, miscellaneous. Does any Commissioner have a miscellaneous item to raise? Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of things. First, I just want to take a quick moment to recognize Josiah and Benjamin Coleman, who have been behaving fairly well this morning in the second row. So, and then I wanted to highlight news release from a couple of days ago. U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona today recognized 297 National Blue Ribbon Schools for 2022. The recognition is based on a school's overall academic performance or progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. I won't read the whole thing, but there were, of the 297 nationally, there were two schools in Michigan that got that honor. One was Marshall Elementary in Byron Center, and the other was Brown Elementary in Byron Center. So I want to just give my congratulations to Byron Center Public Schools on that recognition.
Thank you for that. Let's see, who else was next? Commissioner Vice Chair Brady.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to commend the Kent County Sheriff's Office and the deputies in Cutlerville, Kentwood, and Dutton Fire Departments. On Sunday night, my neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods, you know, went to sleep peacefully and were awoken around midnight by what sounded like a bomb. And a house in our area right across Kalamazoo Avenue, actually from my house, exploded. And the Sheriff's Department did an amazing job. I would highly recommend, you know, going to their social media and viewing the body cam from Kevin Daly. I believe he was the one wearing it. It's quite incredible what our department was able to do. He grabbed the hose right from one of our firefighters and made a water curtain between the house and the deck. The resident of that home had actually been like blown out of her bedroom and onto the deck, and neighbors were trying to help her get away from the house. And so our deputies were able to, you know, assist the fire departments. And on the scene right away, it was really incredible. Unfortunately, the resident did pass away because of the injuries she received. And it was just amazing how the community came together. And it's just really difficult to see what's remaining of the house, which is a pile of debris. And my neighborhood, being across Kalamazoo, you know, you'd think we'd be a little bit protected, but we had debris in our yards, lots of insulation, personal papers, that sort of thing. So, you know, I just really commend the working together of our first responders and dispatch as well. So thank you. Thank you for always serving and being brave.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolkowski.
From the serious back to the humorous and a bit of seriousness, the bipartisan event, my every four year, which is two years delayed haircut, is happening on October 6. And Commissioners Morgan and Womack have already contributed. So I will send out information on how to contribute. It is a fundraiser for the Grand Rapids Rotary Club, and some of the funds are used for things like ramp builds. And there is a ramp build a week from tomorrow. I'll send information on that if you would like to participate in that event. So the hilarity, it will be in the afternoon of October 6 at the Special Olympics Inclusion Campus in Byron Township. So you can come to the event and watch the hilarity, actually bid on the opportunity to chop the hair off and raise some money for a great cause and, again, help people stay independent and safe in their homes. So more details via email will be out and about.
Great. Thank you. Take pictures. All right. Commissioner Ponstein. Thank you, Chair. Are you taking donations for the person that will cut your hair? Because I might be interested in that bid.
Absolutely. All money's good money.
So to start, as always, I appreciate all the people that came out here and public comment. There's different ways that we get information. I think we, all the Commissioners knew from the start that the amount of money we would have and the money that would be asked for is greatly different, and we're not going to be able to fund everything. But hopefully, we use the ones that aren't funded as kind of a roadmap going to the future of needs that are out there in the community still and find ways to try to accomplish the goals in partnerships or within our own budget. There's a lot of different ways people can comment and represent their views. One of them are our citizens' appointments on our committee, and I believe it's the 30th of September. Vice Chair Breavy?
That is correct.
And for you Commissioners, there's a lot of talk about MAC today. But there's a way, if you've got a voice, I'm not the one that's going to be dictating what MAC stands for. There are standing committees. All of you are more than welcome to serve. All you have to do is contact MAC and tell them of an interest that you have. The same is true with NACO. If there's any steering committee that people want to be on, and they cover a lot of ground for not just our county and our state, but the whole country, you can volunteer to be on steering committees for that. And that just takes a call to MAC. We get automatic appointments to any of those steering committees. So if you're interested in serving more and finding out more, it would be appreciated. I do appreciate the comments that were directed at me about my appointment. I'm normally not too comfortable with those things. I'd rather be just behind the scenes and, you know, grinding it out. And I guess my only hope is after that year is done is that people don't come up to me and say, gosh, Stan, you did all these wonderful things. I mean, I really, that's not why I'm there, and that's not what I want to hear. What I want to hear is what we accomplished together, and that's for all 83 counties, including Kent, and what we can do to move this state and our community and the issues that states are facing day to day. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Womack.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to say that I did have some calls about the website and the ARPA funds, and I did look into it and just want to validate what our Administrator, Vanderburg, said this morning, that the last 16 did morning, that the last 16 did come in after 5:00 p.m., and it was great that Kent County made a decision to still accept those, and that caused the situation. But some of the concerns from public comment were to make sure that they are going to be treated fairly, since they were accepted and will be put on the website later. That discussion did also come up, and everybody's in total agreement that just because they weren't on the website doesn't mean that they won't be reviewed. The majority of those were eligible, the majority, not 100%. Also, they were eligible, they will be treated fair, so I just wanted to put that out there. And I just do appreciate public comment bringing up the word equity, as we have to make sure those funds are spread through all of the taxpayers to benefit from this infrastructure money and quality of life money from ARPA, as we have 21, nine cities, what, 22 townships and three villages, 21 townships, three villages. But I just look at the CARES Act and how great we were able to make sure some of those communities and small businesses that never were touched before in such a brilliant way by the government, by us being deliberate to make sure that we got the word out to everybody. It seems like we did a great job in advertising. I want to thank Lori Latham and everybody else that's involved in that, because we have two, over $2 billion of requests for this 117 million. But just want to let the public know that their comments definitely are influential in making sure that we do have a view on those needs that are in places that have historically been left behind. Thank you. And thank you for your work too, Al, getting that information to us so quick.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, regarding the ARPA money, I just, I wanted to thank you. I think a couple of months ago, I called you up and I said, man, you got a tough road ahead of you, because everybody's going to be coming after this money. The process has to be perfect, it has to be transparent, it's got to be a lot of due diligence, and you checked all those boxes, there's no question. You know, it's also up to the local units of government to get the word out, which, you know, I did for, you know, the townships and villages that I represent, I'm sure we all did. There's lots of pieces to this to get the word out, and I think it's not just on Al or the staff here, it's on us. That's what we're supposed to do as well. And I feel real confident that we did everything we could possibly do to the best of our ability. And, you know, equity is great, and I believe in equity, but there's also responsibility that goes along with some of this stuff. And sometimes there are deadlines and things, and it's important we hit those deadlines. So I don't think we did anything that fell short in this case. I think we, if anything, we went over the top the other way to make sure everybody was aware. So I wanted to thank you all for that. And to me, it's a bigger thing, it seems like we have a big pile of monopoly money we can't figure out how to spend, and I'd almost rather not be in this position, because it's still taxpayer dollars. I just want to make sure that each and every one of these dollars is spent in a way that benefits the most. And that's why I've been advocate for the roads. We all travel on the roads. I know the Kent County Road Commission put in an ask, I'd love to see part of the money used there, so they can leverage it with the local units to make our roads better. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try to be brief. We talk so much about agriculture, and I know we heard not only from commissioners, but also from the public about food security in Kent County. And I just want to draw your attention to one of the ARPA ASKS, which is, comes out of the Essential Needs Task Force for a study on food security on the food systems in Kent County. I was able to have a meeting with the person, the staff person who has been working on this initiative, and it's really going to be, it's going to start with the agriculture piece, go all the way to food consumption and food waste. It's going to be really interesting, it's going to tell us a lot about the county, so just learn more about that particular proposal. It's a very interesting process for the county. We haven't done anything like this before. They're working with some really good models of communities that have done it. So just draw your attention to that and learn about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Echo many of the sentiments mentioned about the ARPA funds and appreciate that we're willing to own up to a mistake when one is made, that the 16 proposals were an oversight, and we're human, and that's going to happen, and the fact that we're fixing that is appreciated. Also, you know, I think in the end, at the beginning of this pandemic, which inspired CARES and inspired ARPA, a friend of mine shared the sentiment that when this is all over, we'll know what truly matters. And, you know, I think that definitely became clear as these last two years have shined a light on the cracks that exist in our community, and those who are most vulnerable to falling through those cracks. And if CARES played a role in helping those from falling deeper in them, ARPA should be the role of filling them. And so I appreciate the sentiments about how we can direct these dollars in a way that is equitable. If anything wanted to, and maybe I'm just teeing up you here, Mr. Chair, I know that the timeline for this process has been shared out through email. I was wondering if you wouldn't mind reiterating them and, you know, the deadlines, the timeline and when we'll be providing ARPA input, how that will shape the draft plans, and when final votes should occur.
Yeah, I will make a few comments here. Thank you for teeing that up, though.
My pleasure.
Commissioner?
Womack, sir.
Well, this is your second one, isn't it? Okay.
Yes, I just want to add to that, when we talk about those 16 businesses, it wasn't a human error, it was a computerized error, because that's what it was set to do at that 5:00 p.m. deadline, then it was the human decision to add them anyway, because they did come in on the same day. To Mr. Commissioner Antor, I appreciate 90% of what you had to say today, but one thing I would say, when we say equitable, and with being equitable comes with some responsibility. That responsibility, to me, is not upon the public, that is upon us as part of the government, because inequality and inequitable outcomes was systemically created, and it was an attempt to turn those laws around to allow that type of equitable outcomes and inclusion until 1958. So we still are not 100 years into trying to even that playing field. So I just would say, also, I would like to say, when we look at the 16, even though there were people here today who wanted to make sure those 16 are included and treated fair, and they spoke about equity, I also checked out the 16, the 16 are from different area codes, they're from different ethnic groups, different races, different income statuses, different sizes of organizations and businesses. So it wasn't, and it's very important that I get that message out too, and to my community, that this did not come down to one zip code, it did not come down to race, because some of the calls I got thought that it may have something to do with race and inequity, but reviewing those 16, it's a variety of people that came in late, so thank you. And once again, I do appreciate 90% of what my good friend Tom Antor said, that's my, okay, I'll move to 98%. All right.
That's as good as it gets. All right. Have we covered all the miscellaneous? Mr. Coleman, that's your second.
Thanks for a second, second option here. I just want to add to the ARPA discussion that whenever there's money that's coming from, you know, the federal government, there's always, you know, lots of complex rules and strings and everything around it. Certainly, some of them, I think, you know, like the esports proposal, I find, you know, very interesting and something that I think is maybe a unique opportunity. Unfortunately, you know, due to the rules set forth by the Biden administration, we aren't able to consider some projects like that. However, I do think one of the things that has been baked into the ARPA funding structure that's good is the focus on census tracts that are historically, you know, underserved, low-income type areas. So that's baked into the structure, and so I know that we will consider that, and we'll just have to unfortunately not be able to consider some things that we may think were good projects, just because they don't qualify under those rules.
All right. Anyone else? If not, let's talk ARPA a little bit. So first of all, I want to acknowledge all of my colleagues, fellow commissioners, for the fact that we are undertaking this process to begin with. This is a monumental effort that I don't think is being undertaken by any, if there are, very few other counties in the country that are doing what we are doing in taking the ARPA funds and making them publicly available for us to consider options for funding out in the public. So this is really unique, so I acknowledge all of you for doing that. Having said that, it's also a significant undertaking in time. You've already seen the proposals, you will be supplemented with the additional proposals that were added to it. I think Commissioner Ponstein, when you first said it's 780 pages, I was going to correct you, it's only 730. You're probably right, it's now back up to 780 pages of material that we're called upon to go through and analyze and evaluate. So as with that final exam at school, don't wait until the last minute. I would encourage you to be methodical about going through these so that you can give each of them fair consideration. We already know that the cumulative ASK is somewhere in the range between public, community, and internal projects, probably close to $2.5 billion of requested funding. We have approximately $100 million, depending upon what we do with holdback. You'll recall that we set this program up with an intent to do a holdback, so we'd have funds in event that we had to do something to make sure our projects get over the finish line and cover other things that come along. So we're going to be addressing that. I would certainly encourage you to think about that holdback. It was originally set at 25%, which would be 27, 28 million of that would be subject to that holdback. And so if you have thoughts about that, you're encouraged to contact me, let me know. Otherwise, again, we started with 319, I think, we added 16. I think 56 have been identified by Guide House as being ineligible under those nasty federal regulations that are hanging over everybody's heads at all time. So, but that still is a significant body of proposals, both internal department and community projects that we'll have to go through. So go through them, please, review them. We have a deadline coming up of September 23. Is Lori in the room somewhere? I think it's September, or Jenny? I think it's September 23, if you had any follow-up questions on the ineligibility concerns. Is that tomorrow? Okay, so you've got 24 hours to let us know if you have follow-up concerns with respect to that. And otherwise, the targeted date for us to begin our first exercise in measuring support for these projects is set for October 14. And thank you especially to Commissioner Hennessy and Commissioner Coleman. I think that's the same week that you pretty much have signed your life away for Senior Millage Allocation Review, so whatever was left in that week, we will be taking. So thank you for that. We'll be setting that, I think it's going to set for 8:30 in the morning, something like that, and run. If we are able to get through this expeditiously, we'll try to be done with that first exercise by noon. If not, we'll just keep at it until we get it done. It's essential, once we've started this process, that we do it right, that we do it transparently, that we do it fairly for all of the applicants. We owe that to Internal Department ASK, we owe that to the community. As I said, the mathematics are clear. We will unfortunately be doing a process that will leave a lot of folks disappointed because their requests will not be funded. But let's focus on the good that we can do with this and what difference we'll be making in our community once we get through the process. So again, thank you for all your work in advance of that. If you do have questions about either the process, or you have questions about any of these individual projects that we're reviewing, please ask, ask, ask. Let's get those questions addressed as quickly as you can and as thoroughly as you can. And you can put those questions to Jenny, or to Lori, or to Al. You can put them to me, but that'd be a waste of time, so I would suggest you go directly to the source and get as much information as you can so that we can use this time wisely. Did I not cover anything, or do I have it?
Think you have it.
All right. So with that, October will be a busy month for us. I hear there's word there's an election as well coming up in November, so some of us may be distracted a bit, but stay with it, we'll get the job done. I think at the end of the day, we will be proud of what we're able to do with this and able to make some difference in our community. With that, I will go back to Commissioner Antor one more time for one more motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move to adjourn subject to the call to Chair to Thursday, October 13, 2022, at 8:30 a.m. for the next full Board of Commissioners.
Uniformly seconded, and we, all those in favor say yes. We are adjourned. Thank you all.